2025 Official Dress Western in San Antonio, Texas. Would you like to say something?
We are the Ambassador Committee from the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo. Thank you for the opportunity to come to Shirts this evening. We have been very busy visiting 4H and FFA groups, youth shows, and parades. You probably have seen our entry at the Shirts Fourth of July Parade and the Shirts Christmas Parade. Last week, this committee attended the Guadalupe County Youth Livestock and Homemakers Show and Auction. We sponsored the buckle for the Lamb Division Grand Champion. We visited with many students from Clemmons, FFA, 4H, and Steel, FFA, and 4H, and encouraged them to apply for our sale scholarship. When visiting with these young people, we find they are all so dedicated to their club, their project, their family, sports, church, and even community activities. We encourage them to apply for a sale scholarship because they all deserve the honor. And incidentally, it's twelve, over twelve million dollars the Stock Show has for scholarships this year. This year. So if you know of a junior or a senior in high school, encourage them to apply for our scholarship. That's why we work so hard, this committee, to get the word out. Thank you.
Yes, I just want to add mutton busting is probably my favorite, but the impact that they have in our communities is just so grateful. Twelve million dollars in scholarships. Thank you so much. All right, next on the agenda is employee introductions. First, we have engineering.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to introduce Donald Moreno, our newest engineering inspector. Donald is New Braunfels' unicorn. We won't hold that against him. He has been working in the construction field for his whole career. He started out laying telephone wire. And he told me that he actually worked laying one of the first fiber lines from San Antonio to Waco. So that's pretty exciting. So he stuck with construction and went back and forth between the public sector and the private sector. Even started his own construction company at one point. But he worked for quite a while for the City of San Marcos in their water wastewater department and their engineering department as an inspector. And I actually worked with him for a while there. So I knew he was a good inspector when his application came across. We're pretty excited to have him. He's also worked as an inspector for the City of New Braunfels. He has a grown son, a granddaughter, and has his parents living with him now to help take care of them. He enjoys riding his Harley Davidson and hunting, especially with his bird dog Shelby. So we're super happy that he's with us and getting things built right.
I just want to thank y'all for the opportunity to finish out my career, trying to get me twelve more years and retire. So thank y'all for the opportunity.
Welcome to our team.
Thank you.
Next, we have the police department.
Mayor, Council, good to see y'all. Today I've got Officer Fadam Rodriguez. He's been with us since December. He is on patrol, obviously. He is actually not new to Shirts. I just found out he actually worked here for about a year and a half in the water department. So he's come back to us. He is from the area. He went to Clemmons, and he's always dreamed about being an officer. And again, he's come back. So he's got a family. He's got a two-year-old kid. He enjoys going to the beach and doing a side-by-side for other things. Offering. There you go. So go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I love the City of Shirts. I grew up here, and I'm ready to serve the community. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Welcome to our team. Next, we have the Public Works and Streets.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to introduce our newest street worker maintenance, Abel Valdez. He comes from Mansfield, Texas. He likes to spend time with his girlfriend, which he brought her here today. I don't know why, but he couldn't stay away from her. So he enjoys sports. We brought him along here. He has some construction experience. We like him because he's young, and we can teach him. He's a, you know, he's a big guy. So Public Works, we do a lot of that. We need the muscle. So he likes to top golf, movies. He likes to watch movies, and he likes playing video games. Imagine that. So and he is a big Steelers fan and a Mavericks fan and a Rangers fan. So he's kind of a, he picks all three different towns. But we'd like to welcome him aboard and be a great asset to our team. Mr. Valdez.
Thankful for the opportunity you've given me here. Thank you for Robert, for giving me the chance. Thank you.
Well, welcome to our team. And next, we have the Public Works Utility Branch.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today I have the two newest members of the Water Department, Dean Ficklin and Mark Shadle. I asked them about that earlier, and I still got it wrong. I got yours right. Dean was born in Houston, Texas. He enjoys traveling, hiking, camping, and working on vehicles. He's currently living in New Braunfels. And him and his wife enjoy long walks through Landmark and going to the coffee shop. And he's excited to get his CDL and his water licenses so he can continue moving forward and help problem solve and better assist his crew. I'll be welcoming Dean.
Hello. Just I want to say thank y'all for the opportunity, and I look forward to coming into work every day. And we've got a great crew of guys. And they're willing to, you know, show me, you know, how to get, you know, through the day. And I'm just excited to learn and be a part of that. So thank y'all.
Welcome to our team, Dean.
And Mark, Mark was born in Azul, Texas. He likes going to the movies and trying out new restaurants. He also enjoys spending time with the family and cooking. And he is anxious to find more efficient ways to do his job and help make the workplace a safer and more enjoyable place. And this is Mark.
So went away from Texas for a little bit, for about 28 years in Boise, Idaho, but I got back here as soon as it could. Thank you for the opportunity to work for the City of Shirts, and I hope I do a good job for all of you.
Welcome to our team. And we'll move on. Our next item is the presentation of the FY 2023-2024 Parks and Recreation Annual Report. Ms. Cassie?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Williams. All right. Well, it's not on the big screen. Do I need to push something? Okay. There we go. So we have the Parks FY 23-24 Annual Report. This is our second time compiling this report. We like to show all of the things that we do throughout the year. There's so many amazing quality-of-life projects, events, programs, stuff like that that goes on. So we bundle it all up together to present to you tonight and also an opportunity to showcase the amazing photography that we get at all of our events, time to kind of showcase that and see that members of our community actually reflected in the report. So first and foremost, who we are. So we've got 21 full-time staff on the Parks and Recreation Team, two part-time, two seasonal, and over 250 volunteers. And those volunteers are just the ones that are helping with like events and programs. If you include, which we have some volunteer hours later on, if you include the youth associations and stuff like that, we're well over probably 500. Team accomplishments. So we're really big on professional development and developing our teams, building the Shirts brand. So we've got our awards, city manager's coins that we've had. We had a couple of really big service pin years with Tracy, 20 years this past year, Albert, 15, along with quite a few one-year pins. And then professional development. We have a lot of our group that's involved in state associations, national associations, and also the emerging leaders program. And then boards and committees. So we work with quite a few. We've got five boards and committees that we work with on a regular basis, meet with most of them monthly to really kind of help us keep an eye and ear in the community so that they can report back to us things that they're hearing. What we do, so this is just a snapshot of some of the things. So 457 acres of parkland that we take care of. We have grown our partner organizations. I think last year we had seven. This year we've got 12. So ever-growing, 995 Civic Center bookings, 12 pavilions, picnic areas, lots of things under our purview. And then we get into some of the numbers. So the year-end numbers. This goes over our park rentals, our recreation events, program participants, Civic Center rentals broken down by facility. You'll see the youth sports participants, volunteer hours. When we add it up for BBY and CISA, it comes out to almost 22 or a little over 22,000 hours of volunteer service there. So that's a huge asset to our community. And then the senior center also has almost 2,000 volunteer hours that they take care of. And then this is something we added new this year, our budget expenses. Our Parks Advisory Board asked us last year after our annual report to include that so they could get a snapshot of where we spend our money in our budget, broken down by division, as well as our revenues by division. Then we have funding our parks. So this was a really big year for us. We got almost 15 millions, million dollars secured in funding through various grants, and then, of course, the EDC. So we've got our Texas Parks and Wildlife Local Park Grant for Hilltop Park. And then we had an AMPO grant for the West Deets Creek Trail Project. And then the 12 million dollars from EDC that's going to be, that's going on with the soccer lights currently. And then we'll also help partially with Hilltop and then as well as creating this wonderful park you see at the bottom, Community Circle Park. Improving our parks. So our Parks Crew is hard at work every day getting these projects done. So we had our Senior Center Garden Edition that was complete. We'll be adding the final memorial tree here shortly. Cypress Point Park, we got two shade structures. That was a big thing in our community survey that we did for the master plan was shade since the Texas sun is brutal. Hilltop Phase One, we officially accepted the land over there by Homestead Neighborhood. So that will be where Hilltop Park is. We've got a fishing pier out there currently, and we'll be doing some more improvements out there over the next couple of years. Post-Master Plan, so we, that took a big part of our spring/summer, getting that. That's the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Master Plan. So we fully adopted that this past fall. And then odds and ends, obviously, our crews working every day on different things, irrigation, adding parks, benches, picnic tables, trash cans, backfill covers, et cetera. Recreation, so we have seen a big boom in our recreation programming. This past year was our first year we've ever hired seasonal reconstructions to kind of put on our own programs. And we saw the attendance numbers just skyrocket. So our Parks and Rec Month about quadrupled in attendance from 300 to 1,200, or yeah, 300 to 1,200. And then Movies in the Park also doubled last year, more than doubled. We've seen a rise of pickleball. So we hosted our first pickleball tournament. We held pickleball open play. We hosted our first pickleball league, things like that. So we see the pickleball just continually increasing. We had hosted our first murder mystery party last spring, which sold out with a waitlist. So that's something we have coming up again this year. And then expanding opportunities through new partnerships. We are a small department, so we rely on different partners like Cake Poppin' with Lex to do our cookie decorating classes, Avember to do floral classes for us, things like that. And then civic and community centers. So the civic centers is only the second year that they've been under the Parks and Recreation Department. So we have, they've really leaned into helping out with events. They worked the Fourth of July Jubilee, the Daddy Daughter Dance. They've been doing a lot of process improvements, just streamlining things over there. And then we also had our new event coordinator come on, as well as Tracy retired after 20 years of service. And we added virtual tour options so that customers can view it online and don't have to necessarily come in person. It's easier for them to access. And then finally, just a snapshot of our social engagement. So you can see how many likes, shares, things like that that we're getting. Our demographics are mainly female, mainly 25 through 44 years old, which makes sense because a lot of the programming are young families. So it's the moms that are on Facebook liking our stuff, registering for their programs for their kids. And then, of course, majority of them live in Shirts, but we do have a good chunk that live in San Antonio and Cibolo that follow us. And thank you to our sponsors and partners in 2023-24. We couldn't do it without them. They provide a lot of support and funding for us. So it's always great to have them out. And then the last page is just more pictures.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Council. Floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, great job with Parks and Recs. You guys are always doing good stuff, and I appreciate everything you do. Talking with Jared, you've got a good maintenance program going now, too. And it's not as hit and miss as it used to be. So kudos to all the work you've been doing to make it a better all the way around. So thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor Pearl T. Hayward?
Councilmember Brown stole my thunder, so I was just going to say the same thing. Keep doing what you're doing and growing. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
I just want to add to it, too. Thank you to the Parks and Recreation staff. Excellent job. 27 parks, that is quite a task. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to city events and announcements. And announcements of upcoming events, Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. With the rodeo proclamation, we know it's rodeo season. So Thursday, February 6th, will be the Chuck Wagon Breakfast at Shirts Frost Bank, 7:30 to 9:30. Also on Thursday, February 6th, the trail riders will be coming through at their lunch, and that'll be at Pickrell Park from 11:30 to 1:00. On Friday, February 7th, is the City Council Strategic Budget Retreat. It'll be here in council chambers at 8:30. City offices will be closed for President's Day on Monday, February 17th. And then we'll be back here on Tuesday, February 18th at 6:00 PM for the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. All right, announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. In the Engineering Department, Sam Lopez, he's our engineering inspector, earned his Concrete Field Testing Technician Grade One Certification from the American Concrete Institute. Also, in Parks and Recreation, we just saw their report and all the great things they do. Well, one of their folks, Sidney Perides, had a couple of accolades. She received the Al Johnson Endowed Scholarship Award. It's $1,000 to go towards her going to the National Recreation and Parks Association Conference. Also, she was recognized by the NRPA as being one of the 30 Under 30. She received that award. It's a big deal nationally. So and then also, in the EMS Department, Baptist Health System visited the station to recognize one of their crews for an exceptional care that they gave to a patient who was suffering from a potential stroke, but it ended up being worse than that. And they recognized that because of their specialized training and were able to give care and ultimately save that person's life. So great job, Raul and Jason. And Mayor, I do have one more thing. If I can have Nicole come up to the front. All right, so when somebody's been here a long time, and I mean a long time, like 20 years. No, just kidding. I like to bring them up here and recognize them. We do service pin presentations for folks. And when they reach milestones, one year, five year, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, and five-year increments above that, once they hit 20 years, I like to bring them here to the council and roast them a little bit, but then also acknowledge them. But when you've been here for 20 years or more, it really shows your commitment to our organization and to our community and to what you do as a craft for a living and your public service. So let's talk a little bit about what happened in October of 2004. You remember back then?
No.
So in 2004, October, "She Will Be Loved" by Maroon 5 was the number-one song. Was that your favorite song?
Oh, sure.
Okay, all right. Cost of a Gallon of Gas was $2.04. Pretty close to hell, actually. Number-one movie was Shark Tale. Remember Shark Tale?
Yes.
Actually, $147 million. That's pretty big. And George W. Bush was re-elected as President of the United States. But more importantly, the City of Shirts hired Nicole Cooman. And we got some pictures up here, some various stages in her career. I guess in the beginning, they had to wear a uniform, right? And working at the high-tech terminal there, and it looks like a fold-out table, maybe? Or I think things have improved quite a bit. But we're here to acknowledge Nicole for 20 years of service. She was hired on October 4th of 2004 as a communication officer and answering 911 at non-emergency calls and mastering the art of telling first responders where to go.
Yes.
So when they were, when she started, they were using paper logs, a very basic computer system, and there weren't really any cell phones, right?
Right.
Pretty much, just now coming out. So they've evolved quite a bit in terms of technology, and it's constantly changing and updating. But having that experience of paper and pencil, I think, really pays off in a situation where you need it. So over time, the department has grown quite a bit. They've knocked down a wall, took out a bathroom, and expanded the communications. So there was a need for communication shift supervisors. She was the first shift supervisor, promoted to that position in December of 2008, which she helped with the training, interviews, personnel management, and a number of other duties as they came up. In May of 2021, Nicole was promoted to Public Safety Communications Officer and overseeing the entire division. She's extremely proud of that team, and they work hard to keep safety their number-one priority. Her biggest accomplishment so far as a communications manager is the dispatch refresh that they did in 2024, which they totally remodeled the area. And Nicole secured a grant from Bear Metro 911, which almost, it almost covered the entirety of the $244,000 project. So yeah, I guess it had a few setbacks and possibly some tears. But after three months of hard work, they got it done with the help of Donnie from IT and her folks.
Facilities, too.
And facilities, and her folks having a good attitude about having to drive 45 minutes to San Antonio to work. She received the Dispatcher of the Year Award several times, or a couple of times in her career, and also the Dispatcher of the Year Award from Cibolo in 2019. If you're not aware, we also do the dispatching for Cibolo. And she was the civilian supervisor of the year for the Police Department in 2022 and earned the Chief's Award in 2023. Nicole was born just a little north of Texas, in Rockford, Illinois, but she got here as soon as she could. And she's been in Universal City ever since, grade school, and graduated from, Maggie, here it is, Samuel Clemmons.
Come on!
When she was in high school, she was in the theater club, law enforcement club, on the basketball team. She tried running the mile on the track, but running wasn't for her unless she was being chased. Attended Southwest Texas State University, now known as Texas State. Graduated in December 2002 with a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice, majoring in law enforcement. See, when you've been here 20 years, you get to write a lot of stuff. She met her husband on the side of Loop 1604 and Lookout Road in 2003, back there. She was driving home from her job as a bartender around 2:00 AM when she stopped to help with a car accident. And one of the firefighters, I guess she thought he was pretty cute, who had responded to the scene, who was treating patients, in-between treating patients. They exchanged information and the rest is history. They were married in 2005. She has a wonderful stepson, Timothy, who is a successful banker. And Madison, who was born 2007, currently a junior at Samuel Clemmons.
Go Buz!
You only get one, go Buz! She's the oldest of three brothers and a sister on her Texas side and the oldest of three brothers on her north-of-Texas side, making her the oldest of Texas. Nicole is always, did I say that right? Okay.
Oldest of seven?
Oldest. She likes tinkering and all sorts of arts and crafts, enjoys reading, puzzles. Who doesn't? And she loves to travel, been all over the United States, working on her passport stamps also. Last year, they took a big trip to Europe, Paris, London, Dublin, Ireland. And she really wants to go back. So they've been to Disney World several times and headed back next week. She has also visited Australia, where she got to scuba dive off the Great Barrier Reef and has her deep diving certification. Luckily, she didn't have any encounters with the ridiculously oversized spiders that are the size of it. Are they in the water? Okay. And a fun fact, she's left-handed, so she's always thinking with the right side of her brain. Won't eat meatballs, and cilantro definitely tastes like soap. So congratulations on 20 years. We really appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we got a good picture. Let's send this down. I appreciate you. Would you like to say anything?
You know, it's been a good career. I've got a family here, and I wouldn't have been successful here without my family, family. You know, they put up with the holidays not being on real holidays and things like that, so thanks for letting me stay.
You look forward to 20 more.
Nicole, congratulations on this milestone, and thank you so much for your service and dedication to our city and our community. All right, we'll move on. Announcements and recognitions by the mayor. Right, first, I'd like to say congratulations to Councilmember Ben Guerrero. This is his first day on the dais here, and he joins us. He was victorious on the special election that we had. And also, congratulations to our fire and PD departments on the recognitions that they received this past week. Thank you all so much for your dedication to our city. Appreciate it. All right, one other comment. The, I just want to make everyone aware, the committee and layers on assignments that Ms. Gibson had have been transferred to Councilmember Guerrero, and those have been placed on the agenda. Just want to make note of that. So, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is a hearing of residents. This time is set aside for any person who wishes to address the city council. Each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask, before addressing the council, for the record, please state your name and address. Now, there is a public hearing on our agenda, and if you'd like to hold off and speak at the public hearing, you may, or you may speak both at the public hearing or, and, the hearing of residents. The option is yours, okay? Mayor Protam, please call our first speaker.
We have two together. We have Ms. Siblo History, Suzanne Delano, and Ms. Siblo Invite, Lindsey Large.
Good evening, council. I am Susan Delano. I'm the proud board member of the Ms. Siblo Pageant, and my daughter was the 2012 Miss Freedom for the Ms. Siblo Pageant, which Robert probably remembers back in the day. First, I want to express my sincere gratitude to you and our community for supporting the Ms. Siblo Pageant. This program is more than just a competition. It's a year-long ambassadorship that empowers young women and provides them with scholarship opportunities. I hope you've had the chance to see these remarkable young women over the years in our community, where they have represented the city with grace, leadership, and dedication. 2024 was a milestone for us. We relaunched the Ms. Siblo Pageant. Leading up to the event, we made it very clear, we were searching for young women who embody pure wholesome values, leaders who serve as positive role models. The girls who participate in the pageant ranged from the ages of three to high school seniors. They truly are the girl-next-door, athletes, dancers, honor student, young women eager to mentor and to be mentored. In today's world, we need more youth who are outwardly focused, who want to give back to their communities and make a difference. I firmly believe that the Ms. Siblo Pageant provides them with that opportunity. However, as with any meaningful endeavor, it comes with a financial challenges. As a board member, I've seen firsthand the costs associated with running this program, and I know you understand how expensive expenses can add up when investing in something worthwhile. That is why I'm excited to announce the 2025 Ms. Siblo Pageant date as Sunday, May 18th, at the Shirts Civic Center. This will be our second year hosting it here, which makes me really proud, being a Shirts resident myself back in the day, and now I reside up in Stone Oak. And you wonder, why am I involved in the Ms. Siblo Pageant? Because it did so much for my daughter, and I saw how different it made for the girls that competed and became ambassadors for us. As a sister-city and city council, we hope that you see the value and continue to support the program. This pageant is not only just for Siblo residents, it also serves young women in the Shirts area. Funds raised through the event provide scholarships for girls living in Siblo, as well as those in Shirts who reside in the area that naturally feed into Shirts High School, which is really important. People need to know that. Applications are now currently being accepted. Thank you for your support that you've already shown over the years. Your contributions have helped provide scholarships, opportunities, and shape the future of these young girls. As you reflect on this past year, I ask that you remember these girls and their faces, their efforts, and their dedication to our community, as you have seen them at ribbon cuttings and so forth.
Good evening. My name is Lindsey Large. I'm an eighth grader at Corbett Junior High, and I am honored to be the current Junior Miss Siblo Title Holder. And this is Elena, Miss Inspire, who is a senior at Clemens. When my grandma first mentioned the Ms. Siblo Pageant to me, I thought, sure, why not? I'll get a dress up. I'm sure it won't be that hard. But once we started the practices, I quickly realized it was much more than wearing a beautiful dress. Looking around, I saw so many amazing and confident girls, I started to wonder if it was a mistake. Then I learned that the competition also included an onstage question and interview in front of judges, both of which absolutely terrified me. I told my mom I couldn't do it. Thankfully, she made me stick with it, and through practice and perseverance, I pushed past my fears and, in the end, gained so much more than a crown. I gained confidence. If I ever, if I never had competed in the Ms. Siblo Pageant, I wouldn't have the courage to stand here and speak to you all today. But this experience has been about more than just personal growth. As Junior Miss Siblo, I have the incredible opportunity to volunteer throughout the community. Whether it's helping at local events, supporting charitable causes, or simply being present and engaged with the people of my community, it has truly shown me the importance of giving back and being a part of something bigger than myself. This is why I'm so excited to compete again next year, while I'll not only have the chance to continue representing Siblo, but also earn my scholarship money to further my education. The Ms. Siblo Pageant isn't just about beauty, it's about developing long-life skills like public speaking, leadership, and community service, all of which will help shape my future. Today, I would like to ask for your support for the upcoming Ms. Siblo Pageant on May 18th. Your support does more than just fund and invest in young women's futures. The funds not only help organize the pageant, but also go towards scholarship awarded to Ms. Siblo Court. By continuing to support the program, you are ensuring the future generations of young women that have the same opportunity I did, to grow, lead, and succeed. So, I ask that you remember what I've shared today, when the 2025 contestants ask for your support of all Ms. Siblo Pageant, your investment in this program and investment in the future leaders of our community. I want to thank the City of Shirts City Council for allowing me to speak today. Shirts and Siblo share such a strong sense of community, and I truly appreciate the opportunity to be here and share my experiences with you. Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you to the young ladies for being ambassadors for our community. Thank you so much for sharing that with us.
Now, we have Mr. Daniel Jamerson.
Good evening, council, mayor, city manager, and staff. Congratulations, first off, to Councilman Guerrero on your success. It's been a privilege to get out and help hold the sign for you. To start off with, represent post 8315, located FM 78,1000. And if you get hungry the third Saturday of the month, we've already had a few of our first responders come out and get a breakfast, and some of them had to come back because they get a call. So, don't be afraid. Come spend $10. What you'll find, if you go to IHOP or someplace, you're going to spend $15, $20 for. We got eggs to order, sausage, bacon, hash browns, waffles, biscuits and gravy, even country gravy, coffee, orange juice, water, and just the atmosphere. And it's all being done by veterans here in the community of Shirts. So, please, guys, come out and support us as we support you guys, and please be a part of us as we are a part of you. And I salute you all for that venture. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Dana Eldridge.
Hi there, guys. Dana Eldridge, 2628 Gallup Fox Drive, Shirts, Texas, 78108. Welcome Ben Guerrero to the stand-up here to fill an empty slot. Article 13 on the list talks about temporary signs. I read through that thing, and I got a little confused. I'm not sure I understand the whole thing about it. I'm a little concerned, temporary signs, 120 days or 40 days. Who's going to control whether they're up longer? You got two little shopping centers down here on Shirts Parkway, five or six people or businesses in each setup. If they all got together, you'd have signs, all kinds of signs out there year-round. I'm not sure that that's the best way to go about it. I don't want it looking a lot like Pat Booker Road. I've driven up and down that road while I was in the military, too many times, too many signs, too much stuff going on. So, it's just a thought, who's going to monitor it? Who's going to keep track of it? And is it going to be useful to our city?
Next speaker, Mr. Glenn Outlaw.
Good evening, everyone. Glenn Outlaw, 3729 Forsyth Park here in Shirts. Been a while since I've attended a council meeting. I try to watch it every, after every meeting. It's been even longer since I've been up here to have anything to say to you. But I realize you're still in the early stages of the refuse collection contract, but I wanted to give you some things that you might want to consider, or I'd appreciate if you consider, when you and the consultant put the RFP together. No surprises in there. I think we've all seen the big cart coming for a long time. I wish I could remember her name, doctor. She said she had her students one time. I think you probably, some of you probably remember that presentation about refuse collection. I'm not a big fan of the 96-gallon cart. It's one more thing I got to find someplace to put, but I can make it work. Personally, I'm okay if you guys want to switch me from twice a week to once a week. It's just the wife and I, and typically, we don't put out more than one bag of trash for each pickup, so we should be fine. My wife really likes the idea of a 96-gallon recycling container. She thinks that little red bin we've got is way too small. And then the, I'm just curious how we're going to deal, what you'll see in the slides, it talks about lawn and that kind of stuff. What I wrote in my notes here is lawn and leaf bags. How are we going to handle those, in the cart, beside the cart? It talks about three cubic yards. I have no idea what, how many lawn bags are three cubic yards. I've got two big oak trees in my front yard, and every year, they will present me with two to three dozen of those Lowe's paper bags full of leaves, and that's after I've chopped them up and put them in the bag. So, I'm just curious exactly how the new contract might handle those, and I really, I don't remember whether it was once a week, or once a month, or whatever. There were a couple of options in there. Well, I would urge you to stay with once a week even for that kind of stuff. I don't cut my own grass anymore, but when I did, I would bag it and put it out. Now, I imagine if I ever have to go back to that, it'll fit inside, because it didn't generate that much, and it would fit in the 96-gallon cart. And finally, what I'd like to say, right now, I have service twice a week. I'm in Zone 2, I think it was. And I would just hope that any reduction in service by going to once a week would have some kind of, that I would make that reduced service in exchange for a smaller rate increase. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Maggie Titterington.
Good evening, council, mayor, Mr. Williams. Maggie Titterington, 5325 Storm King. I wanted to share a really awesome, positive experience that we had with Shirts EMS. This is on behalf of all my brothers and sisters, but I got picked to be the spokesperson. On January 7th, at around 4:00 PM, my mother, who lives in Universal City with my sister, collapsed. She was not responsive, and my brother-in-law called 911. Shirts EMS responded very quickly, and when they arrived, my sister was holding my mom, who was still on the floor. Paramedics Will Fowler and Rolando Gonzalez were quickly assessing the situation by asking questions. They could not get a blood pressure reading, and her heart rate was in the 20s. They administered an IV and medication to stabilize my mother, all while being very calm and reassuring in their manner to my sister. Once stabilized, one of the paramedics carried my mother from the room onto the gurney to transport, and my mom was becoming more lucid. Once in the back of the ambulance, I believe it was paramedic Gonzalez who actually made her laugh, and even at 98, my mom is still a flirt. A stay in the hospital, and one pacemaker later, my mom is back home and on the road to recovery. My family and I cannot thank Will Fowler and Rolando Gonzalez enough for their professionalism, comfort, and medical expertise in helping my mother. Sorry. The kindness and calm way they addressed our concerns and questions also helped us in dealing with a very stressful situation. We just wanted to take the time to let our Shirts Council and city government staff know how excellent of a job they are doing in having employees of this caliber in our community and helping our citizens. Thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts, the Cardenas', Bell Sinclair's, and Titterington families.
Thank you, Maggie, for sharing that with us. Appreciate it. We'll move on to consented gen items. There are considered self-explanatory, and information packets are provided to council and available for public viewing. These items require no separate discussion unless requested by council. Item number one, minutes. Item number two, Resolution Number 25R016. Item number three, Resolution Number 25R018. Item number four, Resolution Number 25R019. Item number five, Resolution Number 25R013. Item number six, Resolution Number 25R020. That will be moved for discussion. So, item number seven, Resolution Number 25R014. Item number eight, Resolution Number 25R002. And item number nine, Resolution Number 25R009. Council, do any others need to be removed for separate action? Seeing no comment, is there a motion to approve consented gen items 1 through 5 and 7 through 9?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Mayor Protam Hayward, and second by Councilmember Watson. Council, any comments? Please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We can publish the vote, please? All right, we have six yays, no objection, motion passes. All right, we'll move back to discussion item number six, resolution number twenty-five R-020, authorizing a prorate agreement for the Saddle Brook development. Mr. James.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian James, deputy city manager for the city of Shirts. It's, it's generally a fairly standard agreement we do. We've done prorate agreements that we take before you occasionally. We pulled this off consent because subsequent to the packet going out, staff continued to work with the applicant on a few changes with regard to the agreement. Some of those were fairly minor. Really, it had to do with who the entity is with, or their ability to assign it the entire thing to another entity. Again, fairly straightforward, but really the reason we, we pulled it is there was, there was a change with regard to the excess capacity. And so again, just to be clear, I'm here talking to you, talking sewer with you, in sewage. The developer built a sewer lift station. Subsequent to the approval of the prior agreement, which was back in two thousand and twenty-four, because of how it connects to the CCMA plant, there's additional excess capacity. And so we have to assign that out, make provision for the developer to re, be reimbursed for the excess capacity in the lift station that they built. And so just to be clear, there are about twenty-seven hundred EDUs of capacity equivalent development unit. It generally equates to a single-family home. The developer needs about seven hundred for their project. The city, based on our development agreement with the Rump tract, needed two hundred and fifty. We also have the Carmel Ranch development down south that it was assumed would tie into this. They have one hundred and twenty-seven allocated. And then in the agreement, you received four hundred and twenty. The developer asked to be allocated to the Judah tract. It's a tract to the east of the Saddle Brook project. Subsequently, they came back and asked that additional EDUs of capacity, about two hundred and fifty or so, be assigned to some tracks south of Lower Seguin Road. Staff is fine with that going forward. The other thing that makes us a little bit different is you may recall that the city was going to purchase the excess EDUs of capacity. There's not really a need for us to purchase all of those. We are gonna purchase about three hundred and sixty, and that gives us some flexibility with regard to the Croton Lift Station and how EDUs are allocated. So instead of about one point three million, it's about seven hundred thousand dollars the city will be purchasing, and that gives us flexibility to decide how we use those going forward. Some of it could be the track that the city brought, bought to the north of this. Some of it could be to make some adjustments to the Croton Lift Station, or some we could, again, just put back into this and allow them to be picked up by developers that we don't need to be, to use. They would then reimburse the city for those going forward. So it provides greater flexibility. But because of that change, with assigning those EDUs to the tracks south of Lower Seguin, we pulled that off consent. So staff is recommending approval in the staff report. Or rather, recommend approval as noted tonight, sorry.
As noted, as, with the changes, okay. All right, council, floor is open for discussion. Is there a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five R-20?
So moved.
I'm sorry, council member Guerrero, did you have a question?
No. Motion to, to approve.
Okay. Council member Watson made the motion, and council member Guerrero seconded the motion. Okay, council, please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. We have six yays, no objection, motion passes. All right, we will move on to item number ten, ordinance number twenty-five S-005, adopting a compensation schedule and proceed with procedures for the city council. Mr. Williams, do you want to?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. In November of 2024, we had a charter election that amended certain sections of our charter, one of those being section four point oh four, compensation of the city council. And the language, there was somewhat of a, a bit of confusion in terms of how increases to that compensation would be applied. So the language was clarified, and the measure did pass to have compensation's increases be the subsequent term from when they were effectuated, meaning that it would push back to the next term, or when someone was re-elected, for that increase to be implemented, rather than the procedure that we were doing before, which is outlined in the background information that I attached to this agenda item. Essentially, there was a CPIU increase included. But this language clarifies that and does not allow our procedure that we were having, using before anymore. So I, in light of this, in an effort to streamline things, what I'm proposing is that we implement a fixed compensation structure for both the mayor and the council mayor, members. And it'll be adjusted upon each term or reelection, rather than on the CPIU. The proposed structure establishes a set amount of compensation, and based on your term of office. It would be effective for the mayor, place one, place two in November of twenty-five, place three, place four, and place five in November of twenty-six, and place six and place seven in 2027. So what that means is if you voted to, for this ordinance, this wouldn't go into effect immediately. It would roll in, it would, it would layer in as the new term starts to comply with the language in the charter. So current members would be, any future amendments to the, if you decided that you looked at this structure and you wanted to change those dollar amounts in any way, it would roll back in in the same way that it's scheduled out here. So current council members, once this is implemented, you'll be paid commensurate to the number of terms in which you have been in office. So if you have, also if a person has previous experience as a city of Shirts council member or the mayor, and you are successfully elected as a council member or the mayor, regardless of whether the terms are consecutive or not, he or she will receive credit for each previously completed term and will be paid accordingly. Prior terms of service also, they're interchangeable whether you were a council member or whether you were a mayor, in, in terms of that experience and how it's counted. The lastly, I would say the last feature is if an unexpired term is filled, the annual compensation amount that that person comes in at will be prorated for the remainder of their term. Because the way this would be implemented is each, as soon as somebody is seated in office or, or put into office, they will start receiving that pay. So essentially, in November of each year. The, the compensation schedule is lined out there. You have first term, second term, third term, and then fourth term and all subsequent terms. And it would be at those rates for the mayor and for each of the council members. The, the way that it is paid out now in terms of how you get paid, it would be bi-weekly, just like all the other employees in the organization, and just like you're getting paid right now. And, and I'll make a comment about the amount. The, the amounts that are in the compensation schedule, it maintains the spread between the mayor and the council members. It's, the first term is roughly what y'all make now. So that, that's how that number was derived from. There's really no fis, fiscal impact, no impact, fiscal impact this year. It will, because it will not be implemented until November of 2025.
All right, thank you.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, council, floor is open for discussion. Council member Davis.
Like being first into the fire. Okay. This, this makes absolutely no sense to me. I'm of the persuasion that I, I'm not a fan of council compensation in general. We're here, we're here to serve the community, and I don't think we're any more special than any of the other boards and commission members that we have across our community that spend an, a lot amount of time serving their community, and they get no compensation. There's boards and commissions out there that put in a significant amount of work. And we have board and commission members that serve on multiple boards and commissions. So I could make the argument that, that they put in just as much of an effort. As I understand it, the problem is we already have a set rate. But the problem is with the wording of the charter with regards to doing the consumer price index increase, annual increase. I've got a problem with, with what's being proposed here for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think all of our council members put in a significant amount of work. So I do not understand the logic of a first-term council member getting paid six thousand, but someone who's in their third term getting paid ten thousand. The work is the same whether you're here in your first term, or your third, or your fourth term. I also don't understand the, the tables as they relate between council member and the mayor. I could, I, I would say with probably some hundred percent certainty that the mayor of everybody up here has the biggest responsibility and the highest workload. So it seems odd to me that a council member in their third term would be getting paid more than a newly-elected mayor in their first term. That makes no sense to me either. To me, I, I don't see the need for this. If we have an issue with the ability to apply the consumer price index to our current annual allocation, then I would say that we just do away with it and freeze it. And if we really want to have a conversation about how council members and the mayor are compensated, what I would recommend is we look at some kind of schedule that is what we think is right, and we update the city charter and have the residents vote on it, not ourselves here by an ordinance. The problem, I would say, though, is since we just did a charter review commission by state laws, I understand that we can't modify the city charter for two years, correct?
Correct.
So I would say, I would be more of an advocate to say just, let's just freeze our, our compensation at its current level. Don't worry about a consumer price index change. And that we put this on our agenda going forward to look at a possible change to the compensation plan for council. And if we feel that's necessary, instead of doing it by an ordinance, we put it before the residents in 2027 and let them vote on it.
Any other discussion? Council member Brown.
I hope I say this correctly. There, there are a lot of people out there that go, well, why are they getting paid a penny anyway? And, you know, I, I realize that that sentiment is gonna be, gonna be wide in general. But at the same time, as councilman Davis said, a lot of people put in a lot of effort up here, and the mayor especially, I think deserves, you know, a better compensation table than what's been offered in the, in the past. I think it, you know, again, how do we go about that? That's, that's gonna be tough, but I do want to set, set it out, out there that any talk of, of compensation, I realize, is gonna come up with a lot of negative replies out there. I'm sure people are typing in there right now, you know. It should, it should be free, blah, blah, blah. But, you know, we need to do something. How we go about that? I'm not here, I'm not gonna make a recommendation, but I do want to say that I do support it a hundred percent. And, and I do support the mayor having a, a, a real advantage in, in the, in the schedule.
Council member Guerrero.
Honestly, I, I, I'm not doing this for the money. But however, I am a team player, and if there's a better way that we can do this, I'm all ears.
Council member Westbrook.
So I think council member Davis makes some valid points, not about the not being paid. Because I do think you put in enough work here. And I'm not, I don't know how to say it. So it's, it's not about the money. So I was on the school board for twelve years. We got paid zero. But I do think every other city council, county commissioner, they, they are paid. And there is a little bit more work when it comes to city councils. So there should be payment. I don't know what that goes about. I don't know how, if we've done a, you know, a salary study compared to other city councils, how that comes about. But to Mark Davis, I, I do support sort of a being voted on by the public. I do su, I do support that one. Does seem a little odd for me to be voting on my own salary.
Mayor, may I clarify?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So the, the numbers that are in here, well, at least the first-term number is roughly what you get paid now. You do get paid now, and this is merely just a, an effort to try and make it so we can have the increases that you guys were receiving according to a schedule. You know, I, staff is, is, I don't want to say ambivalent to it, but just trying to offer a solution to a, a problem that we had. We no longer can apply the CPIU increases. So it will be static for three years while you're in your term. And, and if that's the direction of the council, that's, that's perfectly fine. I just want to be clear that we cannot, according to this language, increase the pay during a current term.
And then, and that's why we, we worked on this, is to try to come up with a, you know, we had an ordinance down there before, ordinance number zero eight G thirty-one that indicated the cost of living increase would be applied the first of January. But then we had to hold off to see exactly what was gonna happen with the charter amendment because there was, the language was in the previous election. So we held off to see how the voters decided, and there was a conflict. And that's where we came out with the numbers. And like, like our city manager mentioned, the first term is basically what we're getting now. No, second term, I mean, we can, we can move the numbers any which way you want. I just thought experience counts sometimes, and that's why we put a two thousand dollar increase after each term that you serve, you're serving the community. And that's, that's how these numbers came out. But again, it's entirely, it's entirely up to the council exactly how, whether or not these numbers are acceptable, whether or not the whole, the, well, first of all, whether or not this resolution is acceptable, and whether or not these numbers, if you want to adjust them, certainly, we can.
And, and to respond to council member Westbrook, the, there really is no consistency among cities in the way they do this. It's all over the board. Some are very little, some are a lot more. This is just merely based on what we were already doing. We didn't try and take a survey approach for this.
I know it's very difficult, compensation that we talk about. I mean, it's always the same, whether you're at the Congress level and they're giving themselves a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase, or even San Antonio, where they're giving themselves close to a hundred thousand. We are a small city. We wanted to keep the numbers at a level that I thought would be appropriate. But again, this is a council decision that has to make this, this final approval. And, and as it was mentioned, this council would not be, cannot receive this increase until they get re-elected. Council, Mayor Protam Hayward?
I was just thinking, I mean, I get where everyone's coming from, but the residents voted that we can get the increase. They just didn't want us to get the increase in the year that we were elected.
That's correct.
So the residents already spoke. Now, to the dollar amount, maybe not, but they already spoke and said you should be compensated, just not in the year that you are, that you pass a compensation. So the residents have already given the clear decision on which way we should go. Now, the numbers, I don't care which way or the other, how the numbers are. But to me, I think the voters already spoke.
And, and that's what this aims to alleviate, is that so you don't have folks get elected and then vote themselves a big increase. And this just sets the schedule out, so it's, it's predetermined. It's been run through our legal team, and they're fine with it in terms of compliance with the charter.
Any other comments? Council member Westbrook.
Yes, Mayor. There's still the issue of, like I think councilman Davis said, like, first year versus second or third year. Experience does- Experience does count, but you can get a member of, I should have said, you can get a member, a first-year member doing greater effort, harder work, because that individual's trying to learn the job, than maybe somebody who's been there four, six, eight, 10 years. Do you have 10 years of the same years' experience, or do you have one year of a different experience? So experience counts, but you also have to sort of earn it. I don't know, Mayor.
I totally agree. Experience does count, but the voters make that decision on who gets, who is elected mayor. It is, it is a very contentious subject because every council member here is eligible to run for the mayor's position. And now, you have a first-year mayor running, and he gets $9,000, or a second-term councilman gets $8,000. But to do this for the mayor, depending on the mayor, can be demanding, depending what's going on. We, I would say it has been a very demanding term with development. And who knows what the other years are going to be like? It's very difficult to, to analyze the situation, what the future is. And that's where these numbers came in.
Any other, yes, Councilmember Westbrook.
Yes, Mayor. So if we go with Councilmember Hayward's idea that we've already, that the citizens have already voted, and this doesn't go into effect until our current term, next term, somebody's next term, would it be possible to just do $8,000 for everybody? I'm talking about city council, I'm not talking about the mayor's salary. Just $8,000 for the next two or three years until the next charter committee comes up? Like a flat rate, everybody gets paid the same? There's no first, second, or third term?
That's entirely up to the council. If these numbers, if you want to change these numbers, yes, that is an opportunity that we have at this time. So your proposal is to change the council members from six to eight? And leave it at eight until the new charter comes out? What about the mayor's compensation? Where would you all like to have that at?
Councilmember Watson.
I would just like to have a little bit more options in regards to the compensation. So discussing it. Be an option on the, trying to figure out what you, what you just proposed, I'm sorry.
His proposal was to increase the compensation for a first term or regardless of term council to $8,000 pending changes to the charter and have the voters make that decision. But there was no adjustment to the mayor's compensation that was mentioned.
Mayor, oh, I would propose, Mayor, the $15,000 for the mayor, flat across the board from this point forward until, until the next, to the next charter committee until any changes are made.
I, without, I'm lost for words because if we move the mayor to $15,000, I don't seek reelection, or I lose the reelection, you are compensating the new mayor, first-term mayor, for $15,000. And that's where I have some, some caution there. That's, that's why I think it's easier to leave it at this level and, and let the mayor decide how many years, how many terms he's going to run, and stop it at that.
So Councilmember Brown.
Well, again, it's been stated by two or three people here, you know, it's obvious the mayor does twice as much as anybody else does, maybe more than that, in your duties. I mean, you're, you are expected to be in a lot of places, sometimes a lot of places in a single day, you know? And a lot of people have your, a lot of people have your phone number. So I think that the compensation should be no less than 50% higher than whatever the average council is, no less than 50%. So if we pick $8,000, it should be at least $12,000.
Mayor, could I maybe offer as an alternative, and still to address the inflationary increase aspect of it? If this is acceptable, maybe to amend these numbers to be increased by $1,000 each term? So that's roughly a 3.5% increase each year. It's less of an increase, but it'll track closer to inflation, which is kind of what we were doing in the past. So it really wouldn't be a big difference from what we were doing in the past. And you, so it'd be $9,000, $10,000, $11,000, $12,000, and then six, seven, eight, and nine? And then that's really a 12-year spread?
Councilmember Hayward, Mayor Pro Tim Hayward, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm still councilmember regardless. I guess now that Steve gave a different perspective of it, it's kind of going with the index of 3.5%. Maybe that's the way we go. So that every year you're kind of getting something as opposed to, because it's based on the index, correct?
Well, it's not necessarily.
Not completely, but you're saying sort of.
Close enough.
Close enough.
It tracks close enough. 3.66%.
I mean, because if that's the way we're doing it anyway, we just have to change it because of the language, then I think you always, Steve may make better sense.
Councilmember Westbrook.
So I think this goes back to sort of which is more important, experience or job duties. So if you, if the mayor or the city council's job duties is A to Z, right? So whether you're a first-term or eighth-term individual, you're still, still doing A to Z. So the experience is how well does a person fulfill those job duties, but those job duties A to Z are still being done. So I get that somebody may come in, I could lose an election, and the next person could come in and be making the same amount of money, if not more money, than I made in the previous two or three years. But the job duties remain the same.
And, and that's exactly why the first one is the same, is because if a new person comes in, they will make no more than what you're making at this time. And that's why the first term would not change. It's when you seek your reelection, then you will, you will gain the experience and a little bit more compensation. Because, you know, a brand-new council member, and it's going through a lot of growing pains for the first six months to almost a whole year, where you already established. And that's why we put those numbers there. But it's, like I said, it's difficult for, for us to have a discussion about giving ourselves more money. It is. And I will, I will go ahead and make the motion to leave it as is, and we'll see where that falls based on the, on the council. So with that, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 25S005. Do I have a second?
Second. Have motion made by the chair, second by the Mayor Pro Tim Hayward? Any other comments? Counsel, Cassie Rowe. We can publish the vote, please. We have five ayes, one objection, motion passes. Okay. We'll move on to item number 11, Resolution number 25R017, establishing a date for a public hearing on amendments to the land use assumptions, capital improvement plans, and impact fees for water and wastewater utilities. Ms. Woodley.
Hello again, everyone. I'm going to try and make this not as confusing as that discussion. In any case, Chapter 395 of the Local Government Code sets an explicit process for noticing, holding public hearings, and consideration to either establish or update impact fees or capital recovery fees. And this is to ensure adequate transparency and opportunity for comment for these sometimes very high fees that folks are going to be charged. And so part of the process is that council must pass an order setting a date for a public hearing, and that order must be set more than 30 days in advance of that public hearing. So the, the date of the public hearing we're asking you to schedule is March 18th. We will publish notice for that public hearing more than 15 days prior. So a little bit later this month, we'll publish notice in the newspaper about that public hearing. Another important thing is that you will receive written comments from the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee more than five days prior to that public hearing. So that's another kind of oddball timing. And after the public hearing, you have 30 days in which to act on the proposed amendments. So the public hearing should be scheduled for March 18th, and then April 1st would be the meeting in which you would make your decision and approve, adopt the updated impact fees, including the land use assumptions and capital improvement plans. So the resolution is to actually set the date for the public hearing, which is at a regular council meeting.
Counsel, are there any questions?
I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for March 18th.
Second.
Having a motion and a sec, having a motion by Councilmember Brown and a second by Robert Westbrook. Members, councilmembers, cast your vote. Mr. Guerrero.
I just want to know, what is the percentage of the, you said it was the, the fees were updated, what was the percentage of that, of the increase?
So that is what the public hearing will be about. So in your packet, you received the report that outlines the updated land use assumptions, capital improvement plans, and the calculation of the maximum fees that you would be establishing. And during the public hearing, you'll learn a little bit more about that and also get the recommendations from the Capital Improvement Advisory Commission and some other feedback that we've gotten from Economic Development Corporation. And you'll also have a policy discussion of exactly where to set the rates.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Westbrook.
But to that point, it's not for, impact fees affect future customers, not current customers.
Correct.
Yes, all right.
Any other comments? All right, a motion has been made. And second, counsel, if you can go ahead and cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We have six ayes, no objection, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to item number 14. It actually has to, has to go in order of 14 is Resolution number 25R021, authorizing the approval of a development agreement with BFR LLC for the approximately 30 acres tract of FM 1518 and Woman Hollering Road.
Mayor, the applicant has asked that this item and the associated item number 12, 25R005, be not considered at this meeting, but in the following meeting.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and table item number 14, Resolution number 25R021. And we'll move on to Resolution number 20, item number 12, Resolution number 25R005, approving a utility service extension request for the Woman Hollering Town Homes. This also has to be postponed because item 14 has to be resolved first before we do item number 12. So we'll table this one as well. So we'll move on to item number 13. Ordinance number 25S004, consider amendments to Part III of the Church Code of Ordinance, Unified Development Code, UDC, to Article 11, Section 21 dot 11 dot 6, prohibited signs in Sections 21 dot 11 dot 17, temporary signs. Ms. Delgado, floor is yours.
Good evening, counsel. So this is for ordinance 25S004, a potential UDC amendment for Article 11 for prohibited signs and temporary signs. Emily Delgado, Planning Manager. So some background, y'all keep hearing this from me, this is like sign, temporary signs take four, we're fingers crossed tonight. So back in November, I gave two presentation workshops about temporary signs, specifically for blow-up signs, the inflatable, you know, balloon arm guy, and feather flags. And then at the January 7th city council meeting, staff proposed a UDC amendment that would prohibit wind-driven signs, including feather flags and the inflatable balloon signs, and increase the maximum area for temporary signs to 36 square feet and increase the maximum height to six feet. At that meeting, it was kind of made clear that there was some desire from city council members to allow feather flags in some capacity. And we got the directive for staff to go back, take another crack at it, and then we're here tonight. We are hopeful that maybe this proposed change will meet us in the middle for the council members that maybe don't love feather flags, but then the other council members that want to allow feather flags in some capacity. So as a reminder, those are the types of temporary signs. So we're really, the big kind of highlight is feather flags. So if you're not familiar, that's what that is, a feather flag. Here's some just examples of what feather flags look like out in the wild. So the proposed UDC amendment that staff worked on based off of all of the feedback that we've received from city council, these are the first three changes. So the first one is to 21116 for prohibited signs. The proposed amendment would state balloon signs, including inflatable signs, are prohibited regardless of size. Feather flags are the only type of wind-driven signs allowed. So we're still prohibiting the balloon inflatable, you know, waving arm guy, but allowing feather flags. The next change is for 211117B for the maximum area. We are now proposing a maximum area of 24 square feet, except that feather flags are limited to 16 square feet. So that is a change from what we presented back in January. It lowers the overall temporary sign maximum area, but does allow that feather flag piece at 16 square feet. And then kind of a similar change in 211117C for maximum height. We decreased that from what we proposed in January from eight feet to, excuse me, to four feet for all temporary signs except feather flags, which would be allowed to be eight feet because feather flags are typically around that eight-feet size. So that is just the red lines for that, showing what was being removed and what's being proposed now. So then some other changes that we hadn't previously proposed changes to within the temporary sign section for time limitations. We are proposing to change the maximum number of days per calendar year from 180 to 120. So it is a decrease in the amount of time that a temporary sign can be allowed on a property. And then just to note, so it's the cumulative total number of days for which all temporary signs issued for a property or business shall not exceed 120 calendar days. So it is cumulative, and I'll go into that a little bit more on the next slide. So we are proposing to reduce the number of days, but we are proposing to increase the number of temporary signs that could be permitted. Right now, the UDC states that you can have no more than two temporary signs, and we are proposing to increase that to three. So they could have more signs on the property, but for less days per year. We also are proposing kind of this reoccurring event permit to try to address the fish fries, the, you know, it happens more frequently throughout the year, those special events. So it states a reoccurring event permit is for temporary signs that will be issued in two-day increments for up to, up to 15 times per year. The applicant requested. The applicant requesting a reoccurring event permit must identify which 15 two-day increments they intend to have, the temporary signs, when applying for the initial permit, and those selected dates can be modified as dates change with prior approval. So basically, when someone wants to come in and apply for this reoccurring event permit, they would give us a calendar and say our event is going to happen this weekend, this weekend, this weekend, and as long as it's no more than those 15 times per year, that would be acceptable via that permit. So that's just the kind of clean version, so we're taking the temporary signs from kind of a lengthy section to, to limiting it through A through G. So kind of to recap the key changes, so we are proposing to treat feather flags as temporary signs, they will be temporary signs, but will be permitted, they'll be allowed based off of those UDC requirements. Feather flags can be four feet taller than other temporary signs just based on their nature. And then again, even though we're allowing it to be taller, they have a smaller maximum area. Each business tent can have no more than three temporary signs up at one time. They can all be feather flags, they can be a combination of any type of freestanding sign, just no more than three at any time. And again, that is an increase from what is currently allowed. The total number of days they can have temporary signs up is 120 cumulative days, so to kind of go into that, you can have one sign up for 120 days, or you can have three signs up for 40 days. So each sign on your property counts as a day against your 120. So temporary signs will be issued for two-day increments for the reoccurring event, and it can be shortened if they hit that maximum time. So again, we are trying to address this need for the special event, you know, type of temporary sign permits. That's what the goal is for the, we felt the 15 times per year was more than adequate. So in summary, businesses will be able to have feather flags but not inflatable signs. They can have up to three temporary signs up at one time, but they can only have 120 instances of temporary signs. And then again, the reoccurring event. The idea is to create a consistent framework and to try to limit confusion and complexity the best we can. So then, another kind of background piece, we are actually requesting that we just get feedback and direction at tonight's meeting for council to not actually take action on the ordinance. Based on the lengthy conversation we've had just about this very small section of temporary signs, we are doing a, we are already working on a full rewrite of Article 11, the entire sign article. So rather than making a small change potentially tonight, if City Council likes these amendments, we would prefer that we get that directive, we are all under the same understanding, and then that amendment would actually occur with the full rewrite, which we are planning to bring to City Council in April. Criteria for approval is all the same, and then against staff's recommendation is just to get feedback tonight from council.
And Emily, do you want to mention the, not the special event kind of permit, but the 30-day window to issue the temp signs to help better manage that?
Yes. So temporary signs will be issued on a 30-day window, so if you wanted to come and get a temporary sign permit, even though you can have a temporary sign for 120 days, we're only going to issue you a permit in 30-day increments to try to address, okay, you've had a temporary sign, we're getting close to that 120 maximum days, you know, you might get a permit that's only for 15 days, that last round, to meet your 120 per year.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Delgado. Could you back up to slide number four?
If you can tell me which one that is, I'm sorry.
That's where you have all the signs that are, right there, number three. I, yeah, no, it's number three.
Okay.
Rather than open it up for discussion and we're going to jump different places, I think the best thing for us to do is address wind signs first, so that you can have the direct input just on one sign at this point, okay? So right now, we're going to talk about just the wind sign. So council, floor is open for discussion regarding this sign. Mayor Proton Hayward?
So I've been doing a lot of research since this has come up, and looking at other city ordinances and cities around us, and even my hometown city, I've noticed that they've changed their ordinance to where they don't allow feather or wind signs anymore. And the reason they do not, as big as Houston is, because a lot of their residents start talking about how disorganized it looked. And so for me, when I look at it, I think wind sign, these signs should not be allowed in Shirts because of the negative impact on the city's aesthetics, safety, and overall small-town feel. These signs disrupt the visual harmony of the shirts because they're characterized by bright colors and constant movement that create chaotic atmosphere that distracts from the city's overall appeal. I think the city's known for its welcoming neighborhoods and community spirit, and to introduce these distracting signs takes away from our local character. I think we need to foster attractive environment and feather flags, and signs just don't do that. I mean, let's think about, we go back to the election at Elbeil with all the signs, it was just clutter, you couldn't really make heads or tails out of anything. Today, I drove down Pat Booker just to see what it was like, and there were signs on the left side and the right side, and it's just distraction. And I just, I think it poses a risk to the drivers because it's so distracting, we're already distracted by our cell phones. And so then you got these wind signs, and then I looked at a study where they, they surveyed 160 people, and 22% of those people, it's not a whole lot, but a lot of them talked about being distracted by the signs, possible accidents, or other people being distracted by the sign and getting into an accident. And I think that we don't need to have these collisions on our main roads. We know that once we have a collision, those roads kind of get shut down. It can also harm pedestrians that's walking along the street because somebody's getting distracted. I think because Shirts is trying to be a premier city, and I think we're trying to send a message that we want nicer restaurants and different venues, and to me, I think that doesn't foster that and say that for our community. I think it, it takes away from that because when I look at some of the communities that have them, and then I looked at the communities that don't, and then spoke to them about why they don't have them, and a lot of them say it because of, one, the clutter, two was because they're trying to give this feel of we want something and we want to look better. And I can tell you that in some of the places that I've looked, where they have these signs aren't the best parts of the city, just one of those things that after driving around and, and looking at different communities, and I'm not judging any communities, but I started looking at the signs from other places. So Sibolo doesn't let you do wind signs, and for that very reason, clutter, distraction, trying to have a certain appeal for the city, giving the appeal of the city that we're a premier affluent kind of city, looking at the city of Flower Mound, looking at the city of Live Oak, looking at the city of Jersey Village, even go back to Houston. And they switched because their residents thought it was, it was awful seeing all those signs. I can name a ton of cities where it, they just don't want them, they don't work because they're trying to do this. And then researching different ways of, of business. I know for me, if you're a business joining the chamber, you get a ribbon cutting, and you get all of these businesses that know you're in business, and you can be successful. I know that a lot of businesses, most of the time when you're affected by traffic, it's based on your, on word of mouth, customer service, your, however it is, the product that you're offering, and your customer service, your venue, that allows people to come in. I've known businesses that, that's what they did, it was customer service all of word of mouth. When I think of some of the business owners that I've talked to in the recent months that some of them won Main Streets and some of them were not, and they all said that, and when I say Main Streets, I mean like 30009 and 78 and that kind of thing. And talking with them, they thought that having the flag signs would be disruptive, and they didn't like them, and they liked that when you're driving down 30009, it's just, the way we have our signs, it's not busy. Even when I look at driving down other cities and streets and where the way they even have their signs, like permanent signs, it just looks busy and crowded. And the way we do ours, it looks sleek and has a nice design, so you're not completely distracted by them. So for me, I think there's other ways that businesses can advertise during a business, and the city Shirts magazine, they, I have it again, and it talks about what's coming. So every quarter, they talk about what's coming. And so if people are reading their magazines, you're driving around and you're looking and seeing new things. The other day, I was driving 30009, and I was like, oh, there's an Einstein bagel, love the place, gonna go there. So if the service is good, and I'm going to tell people about the restaurant that, just like one on 78, Thai Chef, anytime somebody asks about Thai food, tell them that's where to go. They have good service, great food. And so I think for me, I just think because of the way I see Shirts trying to be a premier city and the corridor to the future, I don't think these are something that we want to allow to clutter our roadways.
Councilmember Watson?
I'm happy with the proposal, because again, my focus was on, you know, promoting businesses. And I've been on 1103, and again, they still have the feather flags. Every, pretty much, city has it. They, the whole purpose is to draw attention, so I'm happy with this proposal.
Councilmember Brown?
As an actual small business owner, not a theoretical, you need, for special occasions, whether it's a grand opening or some other special occasion, you need some kind of visual attraction in addition to all the other things. When you have a chamber ribbon cutting, yes, that's other businesses coming out, but that is a two-hour event that does not necessarily get people in there to do business. We had the Bob Mills ribbon cutting last, last week, 100 business people in there, and guess what, not one of them bought anything. Alright, it was the other people that, that were walking in because they saw the Bob Mills signs and the grand opening signs, and they got excited about it. They weren't there for the ribbon cutting, they were there to buy furniture or see what's on sale, okay? These are temporary signs, this is not full-time, and I commend trying to drain a pool with a sieve with all the changes that we've provided you in, in direction, but I, I think what, what you have come up with is a very workable answer for small businesses as well as maintaining the, you know, the city's atmosphere. If you want to support small businesses, you've got to let them do some things like this, and nest, not on a full-time basis, and know they can't get ratty and, and whatnot, and that's, you know, the nice thing about giving 30-day, you know, segments. It's a nice thing about having our neighborhood services out on the streets watching things, you know? The responsibility is two ways, but I really think that you've done as good of a job of compromises I think we're going to be able to work with on this, and I think we should move forward with, with it, as this, let you guys finish your rewrite, and then take a look at it. Yeah, it's, it's nice to say, yeah, we want to be a picture-perfect town, you know, for all, all the retirees that can, you know, go to the ice cream shop when they want to, but there's a lot of small businesses that need everybody to know that they're there, not just, you know, a ribbon cutting.
No, regarding wind signs, I agree with Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Watson, these businesses are trying to promote themselves, trying to make it into our city and, and, and make a profit. And attention getting is the main thing to, to drive people to their business. There might be some limitations as to how far from the road, if, you know, like Councilmember Hayward said, it's too close to the road, it's a distraction. Maybe there's something that we can do there, but I think they are necessary for a business to have it. I've seen some of these right by the front door to get their attention because they're a small shopping center. So overall, I think the wind signs are acceptable. If, if council wants to move it so many feet away from the major road, I understand that too, but that's, that's, that's something that we can consider, or just leave it as you had on the proposal. With that, we'll move on to A-frames. I think A-frames are great. I mean, they're by the door most of the time, they're not on the road, they're right by the door, advertising their specials, you know, for the day or for the week. I, I don't see any problem with the, with the A-frame. But council, floor is open for discussion on the A-frame. No discussion, I think we're okay with that. We'll move on to balloon signs. I do have an issue with this type of balloon that's on, on the screen, the one that's always waving. But a balloon sign is necessary when a new business opens their doors in our city. And I don't know whether or not council knows this, there was a balloon sign at the furniture store this past week. Did anybody notice that?
I was uptown.
And it was, it was aesthetically pleasing, there was nothing wrong with it. I think it is necessary for a balloon sign to, you know, for a special event, a grand opening, they have to promote themselves in some way. And as Councilmember Brown indicated, yes, we were there for the ribbon cutting, but there was a lot of customers coming in because it, that, that sign actually caught their attention. This one with the little arms and that blows up, that is very distracting, but, you know, again, that will be entirely up to council. Council, regarding balloon signs, Mayor Proton Hayward?
I think we already said no on the balloon signs when she sent the, when she put the chart up, so the only one that we were working on was going to be the wind sign.
Was it the wind sign?
Yes.
Okay, well.
At the January, at least at the January 7th City Council Meeting, staff got the feeling that the consensus was that balloon signs and inflatable arm guys was, was not acceptable.
Yeah, but again, I want to say this, council, you know, if we've missed the mark on this, we can come back next meeting with different options, right? Again, ironically, what we started with was a menu option, kind of like Loobie's, where we had like four or five options you could go with, kind of run the gamut. We then, in working through that, settled on what we thought was a compromise with some of the consensus we had heard from folks, so we're happy to come back if you'd like.
Okay, Mayor Proton Hayward, did you have a question?
I, I did, but I lost it, so I'll try to think of it again.
No, I'm just, I mean, we had a great special event on Friday, and this will prohibit that, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, again, again, let me say this, I think we've heard a lot of good comments from council. You may remember, I think our initial, after the initial meeting, what we came back with was allowing all of those and not a prohibition on numbers. So again, ironically, where we were, I think when we came back with that, interestingly enough, it was Councilman McElusa who said, I don't recall us talking about this and giving that direction, and, and that caused us to go a different way, and then, and then we kind of went a different way, and, and we're, so we're happy. So yeah, certainly, I think your point is very good, mayor, those are some of the points that have been made, and so we're happy if you want to table this, we can come back next meeting with kind of the different options we've provided in the past and some new ones we had talked about.
Yes, mayor, to the city staff, if, when it comes to balloon signs, there was consensus that balloon signs would be prohibited, and for us to reevaluate it and go visit it, we're going to keep, every other month, you know, there's the option if we're going to revisit it, or maybe we change our mind, some point in time, we have to move forward. That's just my take, is I'm against balloon signs. They look good on Saturday, but, but I will, I will tell you this, I will defer to a small business owner. So if Tim Brown, if Councilman Brown says otherwise, but I'm, I'm prepared to just move forward on balloon signs as being prohibited.
Yeah, a, and again, you know, like I said, I think this is a great compromise based on all the different input that we've had, you know, at the far left, the far right, up, down, everything else. I, I mean, you're never going to please everybody, but we have to, we have to look at the small business. You know, when, when Lowe's opens its doors, it doesn't need feather flags, okay? But when Randy G.'s Ice Cream opens its doors, it needs feather flags, alright? And that's, that's the, that's the left and right boundaries of businesses in Shirts, you know? And we got to respect the small ones as much as the large ones. We got to give, give them some flexibility. And again, I like the fact that you put time limits, I like the fact that you put it in increments, it's much more controllable like that, you know? And listen, if you know my business, a balloon is kind of essential to it. So, but at the same time, you know, I get it, you know, just, just cancel them all in the city, and that's alright, you know? We'll, we'll go with that flow. So I say, let you go back and do the rewrite that you requested, and just, you know, present it as a complete item, not just parts.
Mr. Williams, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I was just going to clarify, if I'm hearing correctly, the consensus of the council is as it's presented. the council is as it's presented with the only wind-driven sign being the feather flags is, is what the consensus is? Is that? Just want to make sure we're clear. Yeah, no, I agree. We're looking for nod maybe and then as opposed to stern faces on.
Mayor Pro Tem Hayward.
I did talk to small businesses that were in the area and they didn't like it, but can we change the time from six months to something shorter than that? I mean, I don't know what the consensus, I mean, and I'm all for small business, but I just, I just, they just don't look pleasing.
So if I may, councilman, one of the compromises that I think we kind of heard was we didn't want signs up all the time. So what we went is 120 days now. So it's, it's four months if you add one sign or again, you do a grand opening, you can kind of hit them with three signs for, for the 40 days or a combination therein. And then you've also got the, the, the event permit, which again, is part of the reason we went to kind of a 30-day initial increment on issuance of the permit. So if it, part of the compromise was reducing the amount of time total. Because we heard council wanted to allow people to emphasize grand opening, but also special events throughout the year and things like that.
Councilmember Guerrero.
My take is we've, we've had a lot of good comments from, from council. So I, I propose we table this and that way we give you guys the opportunity to present more options.
Okay.
Because I'm sure there is.
Yeah, infinite number. I mean, I, we, you had four or five last time that we didn't present.
I, I had six and then we whittled it to three and then we came up with.
Do whatever you want to do.
Just to reiterate, you wanted to hold off until April, sometime in April?
So, so again, what, what I think staff was is if we had consensus from council tonight, rather than approving the actual amendment, we would take what you said you're good with tonight and roll that into the ordinance in two months and hopefully we don't change our mind in between then. When hearing Councilman Guerrero saying is that he's not quite sure this is what he's comfortable with and would want to see more options. And so rather than make, give direction tonight, that we would come back next meeting and provide additional options is how I understood that.
Yes, I agree with that.
With, with the tabling or postponing?
Tabled in.
Bring, bringing back more options at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, I agree with that.
We can get more options.
Is that a motion, Mr. Guerrero?
Yes, it is.
Okay, motion's been made to table ordinance number 25S004. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second made by Councilmember Watson. Any other comments? Council, please cast your vote. All right, we can go ahead and publish the vote. We have five ayes, no objections, motion passes.
Okay, so we'll be back next meeting with different options.
Okay.
Yes. Okay.
All right, we'll move on to a public hearing, ordinance number 25F006. Conduct a public hearing and considering amendment to ordinance 14F20, amending the drought contingency and water emergency response plan, which is incorporated, adopted by reference in the Shirts Code of Ordinance, Chapter 90, Utilities, Article 4, Mandatory Water Conservation, Section 90-119, Drought Contingency and Emergency Response Plan adopted. Floor's yours.
Good evening. Uh, this will be just a short presentation on what we're looking for as amendments to the current drought contingency plan. Brief background, in 2023, we submitted an updated drought contingency plan to TCEQ, which is required every five years. After they reviewed that, we were notified that we were missing important details regarding the wholesale water contracts and pro-rata water distribution. We were really missing all wholesale water language. So to be compliant, we added the following amendments to the current drought contingency plan. It would be the definition of a wholesale user. We mentioned pro-rata distribution of water during a water emergency per Texas Code 11.039. And we added that all wholesale contracts that are entered, renewed, or extended after adoption of this amended DCP will be required to follow a state-approved drought contingency plan or ours, that would be better. And that all wholesale customer, wholesale customer surcharges for excess water consumption was also added to this. That's my short presentation. It was very short.
Thank you so much for that. All right.
I do want to note also that nothing in the current drought contingency plan was altered or changed. We only added the amendments for wholesale.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. The start time is 8:04. Is there anyone in attendance who'd like to address the council regarding this subject? Going once. Going twice. Right, it is 8:04. Public hearing is closed. All right, council, floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Brown.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 25F006.
Second. Have motion made by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Watson. Any other comments? Council, please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please? We have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. All right, we have two workshops. All right, workshop discussion on the integration of the Space Force into the Veterans Memorial Plaza. Jared, floor is yours.
Good morning or good afternoon. It's been a very long day, so bear with me here. I haven't used this style of PowerPoint in a while, but I think I've got it. Ah-ha. All right, council, Mr. Mayor, Steve, how are you? We were tasked with an important task to add Space Force to our Veterans Plaza. And it's a very important thing to me, our Veterans Plaza, you know, I'll, I'll let you know why at the end of this presentation. But we did, uh, we did work with Luck Design Team to kind of really get an idea of what we wanted to do there. We worked with some of our groups in the area, the MAC Group Committee, which was very helpful, the Parks Board, Advisory Board, and some of the original committee members via email. And then we, I think we talked about it with at City Council at some point or with City Council. So the idea is, is we're going to move kind of the arrangement of the, of the monuments to kind of fit the new arrangement with Space Force in it. It would go from basically the left entrance would be Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, Space Force, Coast Guard, and we're going to add Purple Heart and Gold Star. And the reason to add two more on to it is really to make it symmetrical when you go in there and to kind of see how that layout is. I, I brought you a map of that and that kind of gives you the idea of the markings there. So the estimated cost for this is about $60,000. A lot of that is because the stone that, for those memorial markers, the same color and the same look comes from Canada, up in Ontario, Canada. We're going to be getting some additional flags to match, you know, the different monuments that we have there. We're looking at a timeline of 17 weeks, pushing for completion by Memorial Day, which is kind of a tight area to get done. So any questions or comments?
All right. Thank you, Jared. All right, council, floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Guerrero.
Yeah, it's just a comment, the, the arrangement of the, of the flags, I'm thinking you went in order, Army, Navy, Marine.
Correct.
Or Space Force. The, the way they were established, correct?
Correct.
Gotcha. I like that.
Councilmember Davis.
What about the pavers? I know some folks, when they, when they originally did the engraved pavers, some of the folks had wanted the pavers by their branch of service. And now we're flipping the branches of service around. Is that, are you going to include looking at real, realigning pavers?
The, the pavers, since I've been here, have never been in order of the service as it is. They put them in because they didn't have enough to really put each service like it was, so they're, they're not in order as, as of now and it wouldn't change the order of what the pavers are out there. Any other comments?
Any other comments?
All right, I'd just say, when you're out there next time and you see Nolan Montney, which is my dad, who was stationed at Randolph for a while, just, just say hi to him, okay?
I do have one comment.
Sure.
17 weeks, that's very aggressive. Do you think it really will be available for Memorial Day ceremony? We're hosting the ceremony this year.
I, I'm very optimistic, but yes, I do believe so.
All right then. Any other comments? Thanks, Jared. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item number 17, workshop discussion on the upcoming request for a propos, proposal for a, request for proposal for the municipal solid waste. Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Let me get this pulled up here. All right, so tonight I am literally here to talk trash. This is going to be a briefing on the upcoming request for proposal for our solid waste services. Sarah Gonzalez, Assistant City Manager. All right, so this briefing will cover several things. We'll touch briefly on the history of solid waste services here in Shirts. We'll provide an overview of the services that we provide. Again, we'll talk about the RFP process and kind of the timeframe for that and then also touch on communications and next steps. So with the history, as far back as I could find in Laserfish, we established in 2001 the franchise relationship with Bear Waste. That continued on until 2013, whenever a seven-year franchise agreement was approved. And then in 2015, there was the 10-year franchise agreement to Bear Waste. Now in 2017, for those that may have been here, if you remember, Bear Waste did sell to Republic Services. And so a request came to council to approve this assignment of the solid waste franchise agreement to Republic Services, which council approved at that time. So that puts us to present day and Republic Services has been our provider and we've been operating under this existing legacy contract. But part of why we're here tonight is to make council aware that 10-year agreement that was approved back in 2015 is coming to an end and the contract will expire June 30th of 2025. As Mr. Outlaw mentioned, whenever he got up under Citizens to Be Heard, there are two zones that we service for residential. Zone one, as you can see in the northern part and the southern part of our community, is approximately 5,200 accounts. Regarding solid waste, they get once a week pickup with a 96-gallon poly cart that's provided to the customer. With recycling, they also receive once a week pickup and it's an 18-gallon bin that's provided to the customer. Now Zone Two, which is more of the Shirts Prosper area, has about 9,300 accounts and with solid waste, it is an increased service for these folks living in the zone with twice-a-week pickup for solid waste. However, it is hand-collect and so either the customer sets out bags on the curb and/or they are able to provide a small container, but it has to be less than 32 gallons. With regards to recycling, that is also provided. It is once a week and the pickup is on the second day with the bin. Now again, when we talk about other services that are provided regardless if they're in, I apologize, back on this slide, just wanted to point out that the areas that are in the light blue here and up here, those are the areas where the annexations recently occurred. And so that's where we're going to really see a lot of the growth going forward and the proposed collection areas within the next two to five years. So while the account numbers, there's more accounts in Zone Two than Zone One, but five to 10 years from now, it, Zone One will have, have more accounts. All right, so then additionally, regardless of which zone you live in, you are, have the ability to schedule brush bulk pickup 12 times per calendar year. And then additionally, we offer spa, uh, spring and fall cleanups. Each of these cleanups is 16 days in length. We establish a temporary collection point at 125 Pecan Drive. And then regarding household and hazardous waste items and tire drop-offs, those are only accepted on the last weekend of that cleanup. When we look at commercial, all commercial accounts have the option to receive either roll-offs, dumped dumpsters, front-end loaders, and then recycling, they don't necessarily have to go with Bear, with Republic if they have another contractor that they use for that, they can do so. This slide here on residential rates, it's a little crammed in there, but I tried to condense it. Essentially, regardless if it's Zone One or Zone Two, there has not been a rate change in seven years. And when you look back 17 years ago to 2007, there really has not been much of an increase and actually a decrease in Zone Two. So just a little bit of a history, this, you know, is a, a contract that's essentially 25 years old, even though we've had different extensions through it. But, you know, this is a good opportunity to take a look and see at the services that we offer. So at this point, we are following our normal procurement process. With regards to RFP, we're working with Lynn Lantrop, who's here in his firm, Solid Waste Specialists, to assist us through the process. Lynn and his team have expertise in the solid waste industry. They know the ins and outs when putting something together like this. And again, when we have a, a contract like this of its scale and magnitude, you know, it's important to ensure that all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and transparency is key. So Lynn knows what needs to be included and when we come forward to council later for recommendation, you know, we feel confident that everything will have been covered. So I'm going to turn it over to him to kind of hit the high points of what we're looking at for the RFP and then I will come back.
Honorable mayor and council, I'm Lynn Lantrop and I appreciate the opportunity to serve this city. We'll get to our milestone point in a minute and let you know how much we appreciate this service. But we are a company that is, we've been in business together about seven years. I work with two former mayors, one from DeSoto, who is currently the tax assessor collector in Ellis County, which is kind of an interesting deal. And the other one, we do work in Arkansas and Oklahoma, and that gentleman was the mayor for a long time in Magnolia. The reason that we're so proud to serve Shirts is you are our 25th customer in seven years. God has been very good to us. We are blessed to have this and you are our milestone. So I want to thank you for your business first. We're here to serve, we're here to listen, and we've already had one meeting where I listened and got to work quickly on preparation of both the request for proposal, which is supposed to go out tomorrow. And we come back for a mandatory pre-proposal conference on February 11 to get questions from the vendors. And this is going to be, just so you know, I, part of my role is to stay in contact with people that are going to go play in this football game. And I've been blessed, I'm doing civilo at the same time. So there's a lot of people, national firms, they're republicans and national firm, they're a great firm. There's a lot of companies out here and I will tell you, they're going to really probably surprise all of us with a wonderful proposal. Now I write a very stiff RFP, it's around 77 to 80 pages long. You have to know what you're doing to participate. We don't want to bring anybody into Shirts that does not know what they're doing. Might have a cheap, oh, might have a cheap price, but that is not what you need here. To echo what you were saying earlier, I spent 25 years on the board with Keep Texas Beautiful. That's how I met my wife. So I understand how beautification and cleanliness and the impact it has on things that move inside your community. So that's the way the RFP is written. They will be due back on March 5, which gives the vendors a full 30-day period to prepare a good book. We'll be back, I'll be back, April 1. There was a lot happening between, this is very short here, there's a lot happening between March 5 and April 1. There'll be a group of judges that your city manager will assign and they will be grassroots readers of what is submitted because it's in their heart and their DNA. Since they serve here in the Shirts, they'll be the hardest judges. I have the easy job, I do the money, that's easy. So we'll come back here on April 1 with the approach to ask for your blessing on the recommendation. I intend to bring somebody to you that's going to do a good job. Let's talk about the options. We're going to look at, instead of the mixed bag, this will be the whole town would go one time a week with a 96-gallon cart or, this will be y'all's, your call as the elected officials, or twice a week with a 96-gallon. be your call as the elected officials, or twice a week with a 96-gallon cart, which is a lot of garbage service, I will tell you that. And a 96-gallon cart will hold for those that are still using bags. It will definitely handle what's going out in twice-a-week collections in bags in Shirts currently. That easily will fit in the 96 ones. 96 is a whole, about seven to eight standard kitchen bags. Recycling is going to get quite a kick-up here. After I was watching her chart, and you're using the small, very antiquated, quite frankly, 18-gallon bins, you're going to see a real change in the recycling output of Shirts by going to a 96, a sister, so to speak, container. Y'all will be brought two options. One is to have every week, the garbage cart comes out, the recycling cart comes out, or every other week, you will have garbage out, well, excuse me, garbage comes out every week, but every other week is going to be an option you will vote on to get the recycling that way. I will kind of prejudice your vote a little bit by letting you know that you actually get the same amount of tonnage of recyclable material every other week, which may sound counterintuitive, but it's the truth. Then the real attack in the garbage business from a city's perspective is not getting the garbage up and not getting the recycling up. It's very easy to do that, quite frankly. The attack has to be on the cleanliness of brush and bulk, which is the fastest thing to tear down the fabric of the city. So I've always been a proponent to write once-a-week collection of up to three cubic yards of brush or bulk. It's a combination. The gentleman that came up here earlier had expressed a wonder of how much that is. Three cubic yard, two cubic yards is a refrigerator. You can visualize that pretty quick. So just put a half a refrigerator on top of a refrigerator, now you have an idea what three cubic yards are. If you're using the leaf bags, which I think he was alluding to, like at Home Depot or something, about five leaf bags, fill to the brim, would be able to be picked up and stay within the three cubic yard limit. You'll also have an option here. You can do it once a week. I am prejudicing your vote. I admit that. Or you can do it every other week. You can do it every other week. That's about as far as you want to stretch it. Otherwise, you start seeing a deteriorating appearance in the city. While it does say the word optional, it's not written in the RFP as an option. They're going to, we're asking them for a number on a household hazardous waste collection program, and that would be one where every month, if a home wanted to do it, they can arrange to have it collected at their home. They don't have to drive anywhere. They don't have to put that stuff in their car and the trunk or anything like that. It's done right there in the front yard. So that, we're going to get a price on that for you. Lastly, this one is kind of my fun one. When Richard and I started doing this, we said, and I neglected to tell you that my wife is from the staff side, so we've got all these mayors, and I'm forty years in the garbage business. I understand the garbage business. Then my wife was City of Mesquite, and then TML for 17 years. So I've got it coming and going from all the different things. So we said, what is an angle that we're missing? You've got your garbage collected here. You've got your recycling. You've got your brush and bulk, but I call this the mother-in-law option. You've had everything done at your house this week, and she's coming to visit, and your bride has told you that she wants to get rid of this. What are you going to do? So we write in the unusual accumulation collection, and that will be any resident in Shirts, without bothering any of you folks, will be able to call the vendor, and they will have to supply a price in this RFP of time and volume, but it will still require a supervisor to come to the home of that person that calls. They'll visualize what it is. They'll say, well, based on these fees, we agreed, this is what's going to cost you. Now, that's over and above the regular rate, but it eliminates any of your residents scratching their head going, I don't know what to do. I think I'll drive it out on a county road and dump it someplace. So that was the catch-all, the unusual accumulation, and it works. There won't be any changes to the commercial and roll-off other than everything in the city, all the carts, all the dumpsters, all the roll-offs, everything. It's brand-new. So your current vendor does not get a leg up on anybody else. They will have to spend the same capital dollars that everybody else has to spend, but the appearance in the city, I guarantee you, I've done this too many times, you will see a noticeable change when you're driving down the street, brand-new carts, brand-new dumpsters. I just said, the equipment, the trucks, when they start the job, nothing can be older than four years of age. Now, we don't have enough time because of the contract's start date. We don't have enough time to demand new equipment. They cannot get that done, but they can get equipment that's no older than four years. Now, during the term of the contract, I write in there that no truck can be older than 10 years. Trucks will run much, much longer than 10 years, but we don't want any leakers running up and down the streets of Shirts, Texas. So they start with four. They can't exceed 10, because the contract is going to be written as a five, with a five-year renewal. So it's probably, if they do a good job, it's going to be a 10-year contract. That's the kind of way we look at it. I write in there liquidated damages that are, they're specific. There are 16 of them, and they get the job done. Dragging the garbage company down here in front of you guys, and so y'all can beat them up for 20 minutes, it makes everybody feel good, they start crying, but a week later, they start doing the same thing again. So when you get in that pocketbook, all of a sudden, things get fixed. So that's why that's in there, and the city manager can use that. The GPS tracking software that everybody has, y'all are going to be absolutely amazed at what can happen today. Even when I retired 10 years ago, we had nothing like what they have today with the tracking. Each afternoon, every afternoon, the vendor that you select will have to give a full report email to this city. These houses were missed. These houses were then collected, or they weren't. They're rolling over to the next day. You will not receive, if you start receiving telephone calls at your office, there's been absolute failure. So the desire of this written RFP right now is to take the calls away from the city, give them to the responsible party to take care of business and keep you happy. That's the way it's going to be set up. I'm going to give it back to, yeah, here she is. Thank y'all for the business.
All right, thanks, Lynn. So as Lynn mentioned, yes, we are moving quickly with this. The staff that is part of the team, the trash team here, staff that's here, we are committed to, we have been committed and been working through things to make sure we're efficient, make sure that we are doing things timely to get this moving forward. So again, when we talk about next steps, right, so we have the RFP and we have the contract, but kind of the flip side of that is the communication aspect. Communication aspect during this, you know, time where the RFP is out on the street as far as surveying, and then once we come forward to council and present options and our recommendations, and council selects that, you know, depending what is selected, we know there's going to have to be a lot of communication on our end to be able to get any changes that may come from that out to the residents. So at this point, I'm going to hand the baton off to Linda, so that way she can kind of give a quick overview as to our plan for that. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Linda Klepper, Public Affairs Director. So as Sarah mentioned and as Lynn has discussed, they're going to be going out for the RFP on solid waste services. It's kind of a two-month period from RFP starting tomorrow through recommendation, which would be April 1. So during that time, my department and I, and we've been working on this for probably a month or so, two months, we're going to be gathering some feedback from the residents. We're going to do that by partnering with a company, Flashvote. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with Flashvote, but it is a software system that allows us to quickly, easily survey and short polls our residents and get statistically valid results so that we can ensure that we're getting a proper sampling of our population. We're going to be doing a feedback gathering session using Flashvote and hoping to have results from that mid-March, and so we'll be able to provide that to you guys as well as the RFP team. While we're doing that, we're also going to be preparing a full campaign that will be launched once we know the final details of what that new RFP or the new agreement will be. So we anticipate there will be changes if the city's desire is to get the whole city on one page, because right now we have residents with once-a-week pickup and we have residents with twice a week. So regardless of what may result, we know there's going to be a change for some customers or another, and so we want to make sure that while we may not be making everybody happy, we want everybody to know when their trash pickup day is, what they need to have at the curb and when, what's going to happen with cart drop-off if that's the route we go. And so we're going to be using digital print, in-person communication to ensure that everybody knows the changes are coming. We'll be doing that starting in April all the way through June with reminders and continued communication, really through like September, October, before we evaluate where we're at and making sure our people are getting trash to the curb on the right time. And with those daily reports that Lynn was mentioning, it'll be really easy to see what are our collection rates, right? Are people missing this? Are they still not remembering? What kind of reminders do we need? Throughout the campaign and through the development of it as well, we'll be working with a team, a communication team, which will be made up of utility billing, 3-1-1, public affairs, finance, and management. These are the folks that are going to be hearing from the residents, and so we want to make sure that any concerns that come up during the process or the transition, that we're addressing those with communication. So happy to answer any questions, but I'm going to turn it over to Sarah and see. Thank you, Linda. And again, I think that is the last slide here. So with that, happy to insert any questions that council may have. Again, we have the whole team here if there's any particular area, but really, this is intended as a brief, wanting to keep you all abreast of what is going on, and so then that way, when we come back on April 1, we'll have a recommendation and move forward with this.
All right, Councilmember Guerrero.
I have a question. Would the award be awarded LPTA or best value?
Well, it would be what? I'm sorry?
Would the award be awarded through LPTA or best value?
So again--
Request for proposal?
Yeah, request for proposal.
It's an analysis of the proposal, and the highest rating respondent receives the award. It's a little different from a bid process.
Gotcha.
So there's criteria that's established and a percentage amount that, so those on the response team, whenever we're doing the review of that, again, those will be corresponding with, again, certain, the sections, the tabs in the document, the proposal, so.
So we'll get all the proposals. I think his question is basically, were we going to get not just one proposal to accept, or are we going to get a multiple amount of proposals based on value also?
I think what he's referring to is best value bid, which is a legal process. Maybe Daniel can explain. It's a type of bid valuation.
Yeah, Daniel Ellenberg, Purchasing Manager. This will be a best value bid, so cost will be evaluated, but it'll be the overall package that we're really evaluating to see. This one may not be the cheapest, like he said, but they're going to provide the best service and overall value. That makes sense.
Gotcha. I guess I just worded it wrong, but yeah.
Councilmember Westbrook.
Thanks, Mayor. I think he summed it up, but it's basically the metrics. So take what he just said. So what are the factors that are going to go into the decision-making? So you've got a price.
Mm-hmm.
What else? What are the other four, five, six factors that are going to go into the decision-making process?
Just give me a second, and I can pull it up.
And wait it. That's all right, because it's going to be presented in April.
It'll be, when the RFP is posted tomorrow, there is a breakdown as to, again, what are the different criteria, the percentage amounts that's going to be allocated toward that. We'll say, you know, cost is the biggest, I think at 35%, but there are other ones as far as like their communication plan or their transition plan, you know, things like that, that will go into that as well.
Yep.
Councilmember Brown.
I just one quick question. I know it's not the most efficient event that we hold, but it's something that a lot of people really appreciate, and it's the spring cleanup and the fall cleanup.
Right.
Are we going to maintain something similar? Because I see you're talking about a lot of bulk pickup available.
Right. So I think the thought with this, and certainly, again, Lynn can speak to what he's seen around other communities, but the thought with, so no, we would not have a spring and fall cleanup, because essentially, having the weekly brush or, you know, every other week brush pickup, and having the ability to have, you know, an on-call kind of monthly household hazardous item pickup where they come to every, you know, to your house, it kind of eliminates the need to have to set up a separate event where they can go drop it off. So--
I know that it's not the most efficient thing. I realize that.
Right.
You know, but at the same time, it's something that I hear a lot of positive remarks about, you know, through the years.
Sure.
It's change.
And hopefully, though, it may be, you know, again, we have more participation. Again, people who may not want to take their hazardous items to the drop-off point maybe are pouring it down the drain or putting, you know, something that they shouldn't be doing. This may give them an opportunity to be able to, you know, be able to utilize it a little bit better.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim Hayward.
I saw on one of the slides that it had the camera. What is the GPS in the camera? What is the camera tracking? Is it tracking what's in the trash can or tracking the truck?
Councilwoman, they are, the GPS systems used nowadays, they have cameras not only in the cab for safety, but they have cameras that actually show what's going up over. Even on the trucks that do the brush and bulk, they have cameras back there. Everything is watched, but the key piece about the GPS, the use of the GPS is one particular company, they have an app for all the residents, and with that app, a resident can literally see where the truck is relative to their home and when it's going to be picking them up. It's really sophisticated stuff. Some are not quite so sophisticated, but they get the job done. I will expand on the question someone asked a minute ago. 65% of the score is narrative, answering the question that demonstrates you know what you're going to do it. 35% of the score is the price. You can have a great price. You can lose, because the bulk of the work is explaining to you how it's going to get done. So I'm not sure that answers your question, but it's a request for proposal as opposed to a bid.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Yeah, I guess I was just trying to see if you were going to do LPTA, the lowest bidder, or, but you're saying best value, which you're going to be looking at cost.
Yes.
You're going to be looking at the experience.
Yes, sir.
Past performance, which is a lot better, because we definitely want quality service, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hayward.
One other question, because I know a family member lives in San Antonio, and they have someone go around, I guess, checking the trash to make sure trash is in the trash, recycling, all the different things. So with the cameras, are they tracking to also make sure that you're not putting something hazardous in there, and will they end up finding you if they find out? All righty.
I have one general question.
Okay.
You know, and the RFP is not required for waste, solid waste. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
That an RFP is not required for waste, solid waste?
Yes, sir.
So anybody can come in and indicate they can underbid that contract, and this council can award it based on that merit? So even if the RFP is recommended by staff, this council can override the RFP and select the company of their choice?
Yeah, I think what staff is proposing is that we use the RFP process to make sure that we're above board and transparent to the community and follow a process that's defined in state law that is typically used in these scenarios.
No, that's, yeah, I'm just saying that this council is not, is not into a decision that they have to accept this RFP. By choice, they can select someone that did not submit an RFP. I just want to make sure that council is aware of that situation. Okay? Any other questions?
Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move on. We have item number 18, update, monthly updates on major projects in progress and CIP, and item number-- And item number 19, an update on the Eco-Bite cleaning contract changes. These are information packets that were provided to council and available for public viewing at our website, shirts.com. With that, council, is there any updates or information requested by staff? Council, is there any items you'd like to place on the future agenda?
None, okay. Announcements by council members, Mayoral Tim Hayward.
I attended the TML Risk Pool Board meeting. That is all.
Okay. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Watson.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Westbrook.
Bob Mills opening Tri-County mixer. Oh, and I did get to have the opportunity to do the Taekwondo, I don't know how would you say it?
Exhibition?
Exhibition. That was amazing, thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember Brown.
Bob Mills, and that's about it this week.
Okay. The time is now 8:39, we stand adjourned.